Okay, we'll now call this meeting or public hearing to order. The topic is comprehensive plan map and zoning district map change for Millard Road property owned by the city. And I will turn the work to our representative Jacob Granchin.
Thank you Mayor Shoal. So this is a legislative land use hearing. The subject of this hearing are amendments to the zoning and comprehensive plan maps. And it requires a public hearing to have that. The applicant is the city of St. Helens. Because legislative proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. So, does any member of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Oh, don't see any, that's fantastic. And so this one is for the audience. Does anyone from the audience want to object to the ability of a counselor to make a fair decision? And I'm assuming Matt, they can raise their hand or...
They can raise their hand. They can also mark yes or no to signify that some kind of interaction. But it does not appear that anyone would like to make any comments at this time.
Great. So, the rules for the conduct of the hearing are set forth on a handout, which is typically in the back of the room when we have a room. But generally, the order of the proceedings will be as follows. Required statements, that's what I'm doing right now. The staff report, which I'll be presenting after the statements. And the applicant's presentation, which is kind of the same as the staff report in this case. And then, and then the public can speak. Those in favor, those neutral, those opposed. And we'll help shepherd that process. And then, any feedback or rebuttal from the city after that. And then the hearing is closed, the record is closed. And deliberations, unless there's a continuation, should happen after the regular session starts at 7:00 PM or later, depending how long this hearing goes. So the following statements are to be made at the commencement of the hearing. The standards for the decision by the council are based on St. Helens Municipal Code 17.20-120, Sections 1 and 2, those are the standards for legislative decision. So all testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards those standards or other standards which someone feels apply to the decision. So without formal stuff out of the way, I will present the staff report. And if I have permission to share a screen, please?
Yep, you already do.
So just give me a second to take care of that. Okay. Now, the principal audience for this presentation is of course the city council, because the city council is making the decision. And then anybody present who wants to provide testimony too. But because this is recorded and other people can watch, the secondary audience is anybody worldwide who may want to watch the rerun. So the council is seeing a lot of these slides. You know where the Millard property, Millard Road property is at. Some of this stuff is just to give a primer for anybody watching now or later who may not know. So this first slide is just a general area of the property. This bold black line is the urban growth boundary for the city of St. Helens. And this red arrow shows the general area of the Millard Road property, essentially in the southwest quadrant of the city's urban growth area. This next slide takes a closer look at the property that we're talking about. There's a few addresses on there, just to give someone some locational context. Especially if you're on Maple Street, it's not as easy to see. There's a very small portion. It's a little easier to see on Millard Road, because it's the only portion of Millard that actually has some sidewalks all in front there. But it totals 23, a little over 23 acres. It's between Maple Street up here on the north side, Millard Road there on the south side. Though it's not relevant to the zone and comprehensive plan map change, we do have potential access from Chase Road here. We have some agreement that was updated earlier this year that says when this is developed, that access easement can open up. And the deadline for that is now March of 2022. But I should note that this easement here is guaranteed for utilities at the very least.
Jacob, on your share screen, can you enlarge that by chance?
I could. The problem is it's not going to give me the full, the full screen.
Oh, okay, all right, no problems.
Now, the original intent of this access easement was to avoid the hospital property. And so what am I talking about there? What that is, is back in 2009, when the city purchased this northern two-thirds, this southern two-thirds was obtained, or had already been obtained from the school district. The school district owned this for a long, long time. For the Columbia Health District, that was to build a hospital, and that didn't work out. So originally it was just to get around that. Now it's just a potential other means of access. There's not a lot of improvements on the property. There is a pedestrian bridge up here over McNulty Creek, which is along this area here. And then, some sidewalks and a little bit of hardscape. It's probably in disrepair at this point from the hospital project, which didn't get very far in improvements. And surrounding uses are houses and then a church or two. For example, there's a church right here. Now, we've been talking about this for some time. If we go back to 2018 in April, that's when the council formally said, okay, you know, we need to look at the zoning of this property. It's owned public lands, there's not a lot we can do with that. So, we need to, we need to change the zoning. And we had a public forum in, around May. And this is a letter that we sent out to people just to show some of the public inclusion that we've had as part of this process in the last two years. And we've also had input from the planning commission, parks commission, the city council, and a variety of meetings. And that's detailed further in the staff report, if you want to look at that ad nauseam. We also had a letter of support back in 2018 from the Board of Commissioners. Support from the commissioners is important, because as I mentioned, this, this southern third was owned by the Columbia Health District. So that was a taxing district formed to create a hospital, and that, that didn't work out. And the county ended up with the ownership of it after the Health District went defunct. And because tax dollars were not used to something that really resulted in anything, there's a lot of controversy at the time. And so having support from the commissioners, who took a lot of heat over that while they owned it, is important. And another thing to note is that the commissioners who signed this, McGruder, Heimuler, and Tardif are currently the same ones in office. If this was next year, it could be a little weird if they're different commissioners. So luckily, that still holds true. So let's go back in time, let's go back about, I don't know, 42 years, and look at the city's first modern comprehensive plan map. And the reason I say modern is when we look at Oregon Senate Bill 100, that, that was the birth of Oregon's urban growth boundaries, zoning, modern zoning in Oregon and stuff like that. And this is the city's comprehensive plan map following that Senate bill in 1973. And the subject property really sticks out, because hey, look at that, that looks familiar. Back in 1978, it was zoned, or excuse me, it had a comprehensive plan designation of public lands. And it's been within the city for about 10 years. We annexed it around 2009. And because the comprehensive plan map showed it as public lands then and still now, when it was annexed, it was zoned public lands. The school district owned this for a long time and used it for wetland mitigation and stuff like that. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But I believe that this comprehensive plan designation was due to the school district ownership at the time. Of course, the school doesn't own it anymore, and things change, and you have to reconsider zoning. And that's why we have this hearing today. So let's look at the zoning and some other things. So, the subject property is highlighted in this dark blue line. And as you can see, most of it's blue, and this is this public land zoning, which, which doesn't have a lot of allowed uses, it's very limited. But the portion on the other side of the creek here is zoned R7. And even if you go back to this comprehensive plan map, you can see the creek was a division line there as well. So that's our current zoning. Some utility information, we do have a sanitary sewer main line along Millard. In fact, that sewer line is the reason this ended up getting annexed in 2009 or so. From a water standpoint, we do have city water infrastructure along Maple Street. And then, this entire property is within the McNulty Water District, and so that is also an option. Most of the surrounding property is not in city limits. And the way to tell on this map is if it has a solid color, such as this property down here, that means it has been annexed and it has an official city zoning. If it's this shaded pattern, it isn't within our urban growth boundary, but it has not been annexed yet. So you can see there's a little bit here, and then there's city limits to the north of that. So let's talk parks. This is a page from our Parks and Trails master plan. And this was adopted in 2014. And here's the Millard Road property there, so it's, it was in the discussion at the time. And back when the city obtained this, the, the discussion, although it wasn't formalized yet, was that it was going to be a future park. And, and that's why it ended up being memorialized as such in this Parks and Trails Plan. And as you can see, this bottom third is not shown, because the city hadn't acquired the property yet. And the, the property ended up in the city's ownership, kind of by default. Because it had been annexed, the county looked into the various laws from acquiring it from the Health District, and determined that it ended up going to the city, because it was in, within our corporate boundary. One thing that we need to talk about is our comprehensive plan policy for parks to be within half-mile radii of residential areas. And this southwestern quadrant is pretty much all residential, except for the subject property itself. And you can see that, you know, we have a lot of parks, and the east side of town, east of the highway, is pretty well suited for that half-mile rule. But when we get on the west side, there, there are some holes, especially in this southwest, yeah, southwest quadrant. One thing that we have to look at is the comprehensive plan talks about acquiring sites for future parks as identified on the comprehensive plan, as far in advance as possible, and have those sites be within one and a half mile of residential areas. And when we do zone changes and stuff, we're supposed to look at our comprehensive plan policies and all the stuff that's adopted into that. Now, as public lands, parks are allowed outright, great. When we go to mixed use, they're no longer a permitted use, but a conditionally permitted use. And that doesn't mean it's impossible, does it? But it does create a higher bar for that use to take effect. It means it requires a public hearing before the planning commission. Now, when we talked about the parks, there were some discussions about, well, you know, do we, do we keep some of it as public lands? Or do we change it to mixed use in its entirety? And back at the council's meeting on June 5th of 2019, there was a discussion about having a core portion that was public lands with the rest being mixed use. And the idea is that we'd have some concepts drafted to understand how much property would be needed to achieve the goal of the Parks Plan. And the Parks and Trails Plan, it doesn't call this just any park. It calls for a community park. And the significance of the community park versus, let's say, a park, a park, or something like that, is level of service. A community park serves a variety of interests, a variety of needs, and a variety of activities. And so it's not just trails, it could be sports facilities and something like that. Now, this, and the smaller version here, these are not adopted plans. These are not plans that are going to say that this will be a park. These were conceptual to help us through this process. Now, when we revisited this in January of this year, the council was concerned about the, the amount that this park could take up on this property. And there was a bright discussions. And ultimately, the direct direction was to zone it all mixed use. And the discussion that the council had in June was to focus the, the park design towards the creek. And I, and I think the challenge that the Parks Commission had was the fact that the Parks Master Plan called it a community park that had those greater uses. And I believe that's why we ended up with, with two versions. And so, because mixed use makes parks more difficult, you know, that got us kind of scratching our head, like, well, how do we deal with this? So, when we got to the planning commission, we recommended a stipulation in the ordinance, the adoption ordinance for this zoning and comprehensive plan map change, that the Parks Master Plan still be honored. But there was also some snarky comments about, you know, the, the properties in the area are larger, why do they need a park? And, and a discussion I had with Council Carlson after that meeting, you know, she mentioned, well, what if there was a partnership with the fairgrounds for those recreation needs? And that really got me thinking, you know, this exercise was to figure out where to draw on the line in the sand from a zoning standpoint. And, and I think where some people were rubbed the wrong way is that this, because of some of the details, it suggested that building a park here was certain and imminent. And that's really not the case. In fact, this, being a park, as far as need, is probably not going to be needed for arguably decades. And that's why we have to look at the comprehensive plan that talks about acquiring properties into the future, because it's really, it's really, it's really a legacy question. Now, if, if we look at population growth, we go back to 1920. Our population was around 2,200. You add 50 years to that, to 1970, now we're at 6,000, or about 6,200. So an increase of about 4,000. If we move ahead to 2010, about 10 years ago, we're around 13,000. Now, whether or not population growth will grow at those higher rates is debatable. And I've heard somewhere the growth will slow. But growth is probably going to change, and need for open space is something in the future. And one of the things that I've kind of struggled with this is how do we solve the, the parks puzzle? And then also have plenty of opportunities for this property, which does have water and sewer service now. And when we're at the planning commission, you know, they just recommended that the ordinance talk about the Parks Commission. But given some of those discussions about, well, you know, I don't think people understand that this is a park well into the future. And of course, we also talked to the council about the Ross Road property. Now, which is here, here's a Ross Road property. I'm going to back up a couple of slides. So if we go back to this one, here's Millard Road property. And here's Ross Road right over here. So it's still a property in the southwestern quadrant. You know, an area that essentially is, is a park desert, given the half-mile service radius in our comprehensive plan. So the Ross Road property. So, in, in thinking about this after the planning commission, the idea that I had was, as part of the ordinance for this proposal, why couldn't we add this as an exhibit? And if you look up here, you know, this is already set up to be an exhibit of the ordinance. So, okay, well, we can say that, you know, the Parks Master Plan still needs to be honored. But, but, this Ross Road property is an alternative to the Millard Road property. So you're embodying it in the ordinance, you're planting the seed to kind of tie those together. And that way, if there's discussions about developing the Millard Road property, and it uses most of it up, that's okay. We have an ordinance that shows this as an alternative, and that plants the seed for future parks plans, which are several years away, to be included. And then, you know, let's say in five years from now, there's a discussion about selling the Millard Road property to master builder Bob, right? And, and you have Hot Head Herb on the planning commission. And Hot Head Herb is losing his mind, because you're selling the Millard Road property. And he sees this in the, in the Parks Plan, and he's like, "Council, what the heck are you doing?" And then we as staff, well, you know, we remember this. We go to back this ordinance and say, you know, "Look, the council considered this." And we have this ordinance that says that the council can consider this Ross Road property as an alternative. And so we're using this process to embody this idea formally into all of our ordinances and such. And this, this shows the basics. And when you're, when you're looking at planning, that's what you start with, right? So, where's it at, where's the boundary, and what do you have going on? So the Ross Road property is just a little under 14 acres. We know we have the creek down here, and some floodplain and protections over around the creek. It's mostly, the, the slope is very gentle for the entire property, except down here. And so you probably would leave this natural anyways. Now, we don't have wetland delineations and stuff for this property. But in, in walking this property earlier this week, and seeing how green this was in the middle of August, I'm pretty sure there's some wetlands here. Now, is it an entire 300 square feet? That I don't know. But this is planning level stuff. The point is, you know, you have about 14 acres, about two of, two of those acres are wetland-sensitive lands, which leaves you with a net of around 12. And I'll fast forward really quick here. When we look at the Millard Road property, it is 23 acres. But about seven and a half of those are wetland-sensitive lands, which leaves a net of around 15. So when you're looking at net acreage, the difference isn't that great. And in fact, the Ross Road property may have less encumbrances than the Millard one, because the Millard Road property has wetlands in various places, where the Ross Road one is, is probably less encumbered by wetlands. And so to, to honor, well, when we, when we do zone and comprehensive plan map changes, we have to look at our comprehensive plan. And so I think this is a good way to solve the park conundrum, meet the council's desires, and still have something on the books as a backup plan that doesn't inhibit the Millard property bureaucratically or politically. So that is the, the idea there. Now, let's look at the sensitive lands on the Millard Road property itself. You have the creek, floodplain, stuff going on there. You have this wetland here, this wetland here, which has a protection zone per our rules. This wetland, and then this is some mitigation area for the hospital. The school district used this property for wetland mitigation for other school projects. And that's significant, I mean, from a zone change standpoint, it's, it's irrelevant. But it's good information for the council to be aware of, and anybody who's watching this who may be interested. These wetlands are mitigation projects. And so if these are going to be impacted, there's going to be a higher bar of restoration with the state of Oregon. So generally speaking, you'll want to avoid these ones. I don't know if this one's a, a mitigation wetland, but these certainly are. And then we have a deed restriction that the Health District didn't do for somewhere down here that, that we still need to do. I try to always remind the council of that, so I remember it whenever we talk about this. So, I mentioned net developable area. And this is something that I want to have a better handle of for the purpose of this exercise, but also for the future, when we talk to people who may want to buy it, just to understand what's going on. So I just did this breakdown. And, and the more important thing is that, whoops, jumped a gun. About seven and a half acres is encumbered by sensitive lands. And did someone let Tina in that showed up to me as a co-host? I'm, I'm assuming someone did, like Matt?
What's that, Jacob?
Oh, Tina Curry, it looked like she was trying to get...
Oh yeah, no, you're good, keep going.
So, net developable area. Of course, we have to talk about more than just parks. Housing comes into play. And if you recall, we delayed this zone change to complete our housing needs analysis. Just because we didn't want to be embarrassed by making a decision that didn't coexist with this. And the significance part of the housing needs analysis is surplus versus deficit. And we have a surplus of our low and median density residential lands. And the only thing that we have a slight deficit on in the 20-year planning horizon is high density. But look, look at what this says. "High-density residential land deficit could be addressed in commercial mixed-use land surplus." So the housing needs analysis ended up supporting mixed use for this property. Right now, it's public lands, no housing is possible whatsoever. And so, this zone change makes housing possible, so that makes it easier to check that box. Now, from a zoning standpoint, this is the same slide that we used when we were discussing zoning. And so there's a lot of excess information on here. But the main thing is to look at mixed use, and generally, the types of things allowed. So there's a lot of residential uses allowed. Apartments can potentially be allowed, RV parks potential. Public parks, like I mentioned, they're conditionally permitted in the mixed-use zone. And then there's some commercial uses. And I also want to talk about the Ross Road property in the context of this slide. So the Ross Road property has a comprehensive plan designation, such that if annexed, it would be zoned R10, R7, R5, or AR. And in all of those zoning districts, public parks are permitted uses, so great. You know, no, no conflict there with the Ross Road, should the council agree with the staff recommendation as I described. There are some folks in the state that like to observe what jurisdictions are doing. And they're watchdogs, in a sense. And one of those entities is the Fair Housing Council. And the one thing that I usually don't discuss ad nauseam is, you know, each statewide planning goal, and how we meet it, and all that specific stuff. And you want me to drone on and on about that, I certainly can. But my goal of this isn't to put you to sleep. Now, if you're having insomnia problems, I can certainly talk about each land use goal as it applies. But we, we were very thorough in this staff report. I remember the controversy of the Millard Road property because of the hospital district. And so we put a lot of effort to really cover our basis, just in case there was controversy. And of course, then nobody showed up at the planning commission meeting. And that, that's what happens when you're very thoroughly prepared. And of course, then nobody showed up at the planning commission meeting, and that, that's what happens when you're very thoroughly prepared. That's when you don't need it. But, you know, if we took a half-assed job at the planning commission, people would show up and we'd be embarrassed. So I'd rather be prepared, overly prepared than under-prepared. Anyways, the Fair Housing Council supports it. And that's the significance there. There's some other stuff that's talked about in the, in the staff report. Our economic opportunities analysis, for example. Public lands has minimal employment uses. And mixed use does allow them, and the economic opportunities analysis is basically inventory of your employment lands, commercial, industrial. Our transportation systems plan shows a north-south link between Maple and Millard. And that's possible regardless of the zoning. We also have to answer the spot zone question. And there's, there's two, that's a two-pronged question for whether or not it's a spot zone. And if it was a spot zone, we'd have to say no. And one is it compatible with surrounding land uses? And does it further the comprehensive plan? Well, as I described, it furthers the comprehensive plan. And right now, the zoning is alien. It's large, it's over 20 acres, and it's different than anything around it. So it's kind of a node of a sense, we're just changing the type of node that it is. And so we don't believe that it is a spot zone. So the planning commission recommends approval. The planning commission, what, you know, their recommendation wasn't as evolved because, you know, we kind of considered what happened there and took it further. But our recommendation is approval with the stipulation to talk about honoring the Parks and Master Plan, but that the Ross Road property is an alternative for community park purposes for the Parks Plan. And that doesn't mean you can't have a park here, you could still have a little nature park. The, the emphasis would be the community park that just has a higher level of service. And that's, that's my spiel. So any questions at the council before we see if there's any public testimony? And remember, deliberations is for the regular session.
I'm good, I heard it the first time. And the planning commission, I heard, got all my questions answered.
Okay, thumbs up from Steed. And blank eyes, okay.
Yeah, we're fine.
Cool.
All right.
I have no problem sleeping, Jacob.
Push down, Jacob.
Goal one, let's talk about goal one. All right, so let's see if there's any testimony. So the first would be anybody who would like to testify in favor of this proposal. Please raise your hand or otherwise do something as a participant so we can see that you want to talk.
I do not see anybody.
Negative, okay. Does anybody want to talk regardless, neutral, opposed? I, I see Brady with a thumbs up. I'm assuming he would like to speak. Brady, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. So my concern is that, of course, this is the property that was stolen from the citizens of the county. It didn't belong to St. Helens, and I will continue to always feel that way about the property. But that I want to remind the city council of the commitment to use it, not for, my concern is the commercial portion of that mixed-use zoning. Originally, again, not happy with how the city got it, but we will move on. But the commitment to make it low-income housing or a public use. And I'm okay with that, I'm not okay with it becoming another Walmart or another commercial property when, in fact, it was supposed to be a public use. And not just the people of St. Helens paid for it, but the majority of the county paid for it. And that would be my concern is that, in fact, you honor what you have previously said that you would do and what is allowed to go there. And I don't know that this mixed-use designation does that.
Thank you, Brady. And my response is the mixed-use zone does allow a wide variety of uses. And the idea with mixed use is that the market helps determine whether it goes residential or commercial or somewhere in between. But civic uses are still possible as well.
I don't see any other comments, Jacob.
That dog may want to comment. Let's see.
And then opposed.
So Mayor Shoal, if you want to close the hearing?
Just announce the opposed before we close it?
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, any opposition? This is your last call for testimony and opposition, early end of testimony.
Okay, see none, we will close this public hearing. And we'll give us just a minute, just a minute.